Oh, man. Help yourself. I know that's right. Yes, indeed. Well, it's three bells, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon and Happy New Year, everyone. At this particular time, it's 3:00 PM and it's time for us to get started. I want to welcome you to the January 5th Kettle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission Meeting, Kettle Parish and Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Commission. And I believe we have volunteers by Ms. Jackson to do the invocation and Ms. Newby will do the pledge of allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand.
Please bow heads. Father God, we come to you asking you for nothing but thanking you for everything. Lord, thank you for everyone that is here today, Lord. Thank you for their arriving mercy and give them that same mercy and grace on their departure, Lord. Lord, watch over everybody, heal our bodies, touch our bodies. We have so much going on in this world, Lord, that we just need you, Lord. And all we need to do is to ask you in your name and we know that it will be done. Lord, we thought this meeting to be what you would have it to be. In your name sake, these blessings we ask, amen.
Face the fire, hand up a heart, recite with me. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, ladies. At this particular time, I believe our agenda calls for opening remarks from the chair and we'll get right to that. We'd like to say welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Kettle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand right down front next to the podium. For future or further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated to the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 PM on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportkettlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested by a specific, for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission's taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as it's related to the matters you are concerned with. Copies of this document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. Copies, as a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. This particular time, we'll call for an approval of the minutes from the month of December, December 1, 2021. We have a motion, please. Motion by Mr. Robertson, second by Ms. Newby. All those in favor, please vote. All right, that motion's carried. At this particular time, we are moving into one consent agenda item, case number 21-11-SC, final plat. This is Providence Development Company. This being a consent item, I would ask if there is anyone present who needed to make any comments relative to it. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion for approval. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Ms. Newby.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Question, please.
Question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I may be uninformed here, but the material provided to the commissioners says the property is to be subdivided into four buildable lots for residential use. The existing zoning is R2 PUD and the proposed use is C1. So I'm a little bit confused. If we're going to residential, why are we putting a commercial zoning on the property?
I believe that would be a question for staff at this time.
I'll let Stephen ask that question.
Mr. Dean?
When that, when that PUD was originally conceived, it was conceived as a residential and commercial development. Everything that's in front of you is consistent with what was presented to the board and the council when that PUD was originally approved. So yes, there's C1 type uses, but those were granted as orders released as part of the PUD. Since the majority of the, of the site was residential, that's why that label was placed on it as a base.
And the outcome here is going to be commercial development or residential development?
Well, the, the outcome is commercial development. This is a section of the, of the development that has always been set aside for commercial.
So the statement for buildable lots for residential uses is inaccurate?
That's correct. It, it should be for commercial.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I, I'm familiar with the property and it's a very nice development. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Robertson, thank you very much. At this particular time, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion.
There's one on the floor, is that they're not?
I'm sorry?
There was already one on the floor, that's right.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That's okay. I think Curtis, and I second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Joseph and a second by Ms. Newby. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no.
Mr. Morton, you to vote.
There we go. All right, that motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move to item number seven. Case number 21-184-C, zoning request. We would now call Ms. Teresa Dickey, if she's present. Is Ms. Dickey present or someone representing her? According to my notes, this particular case was deferred and continued from December 5th to today. All right, board members, what's your pleasure relative to this since we don't have anyone present and I believe that was the case in December? Staff, what was, what's our normal policy at this point, please?
You have two options, Mr. Chair. You can move this to the end of the agenda to allow for the applicant to apply it, or you can accept the case with the staff recommendations that the staff and the board has no other questions to make a decision on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I was fixing to say, we can barely hear you.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Did, did you hear me, Mr. Chair? Yes, sir, I did. We have options, two options currently. We can either entertain a motion to move this to the end of the agenda today, allowing the applicant a chance to perhaps maybe appear, or we can accept the recommendations of the board, I'm sorry, of the staff as printed and then move forward with that. What's your pleasure?
I would like to make a recommendation, a recommendation based on staff, recommendation for approval that we approve this.
All right, we have, that's in the form of a motion?
Yes, that's a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Newby, second by Mr. Joseph, that we approve the applicant's request. All those in favor, please vote yes, oppositions no. I can everybody push your button.
Mine, Mr. Chairman, mine is not working.
Okay. Maybe in the ten, catch to it. We got a key up one more time.
So we need to revote?
Yeah. All right, just tell us when you're ready. All right, here we go. Did it blink that time? Still not working?
Maybe it's just chronic.
All right, we'll call for a show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppositions, no. Thank you. All in. Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll move to case number eight. Item eight, case number 21-199-C, zoning request, cross-development. Anyone present to speak on that behalf? Please come forward, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Give us your name and mailing address, please.
Yes, Joe Dell with Cross Development. Mailing address is 4336 Marsh Ridge Road, Carrollton, Texas, 75010.
All right, ahead. Tell us a little bit of why you're here.
So we're here to rezone the property to allow for a automotive repair major use. Here to answer any questions the board may have. We agree with the staff's assessment and comments and so just really open to questions y'all may have regarding the development.
All right, board members?
I have.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Newby?
Sorry, I'm going to request to speak.
Got you in the queue.
Can you just, just give me a brief understanding of the difference on how you're operating now compared to how you're going to be operating with this change?
Yes, so the current zoning is C3, which I don't believe allows an automotive repair major as a use. And so we are going to be operating auto repair minor, I think is oil change places and minor work. We're actually a auto body shop, which was, I think, presented here a while back. I don't know the outcome of that one, but auto body major is, is what's, is what we're requesting for on this side, which is an auto body shop, paint and body.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, anyone else have questions for this gentleman? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Mr. Morton. Please vote.
I don't have an option to vote. I think I'm still in the queue.
Yeah, isn't that all?
It's not.
Oh, sorry.
Well, we're in a new year. This is how we start each new year off. With a little chaos. There we go. Maybe you can vote now and see if it works. All in? All right, let's have a show of hands. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. All right, hands down, opposition? Thank you. Motion carries. We will go to item number nine, case number 21-201-C, zoning request. This is a franchise operation, Laguna, Laguna. Lagunita, thank you. Franchise operation. Is there anyone present to represent that organization? Please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I appreciate it.
I'm Tammy Owens with Fort Tavada, 920 Fairmont Road, Suite 520 in Shreveport, 71106. The applicant wishes to defer this case until the next public hearing.
All right, and your name again, ma'am?
Tammy Owens.
Ms. Owens? Board members, you've heard that request to defer and continue?
Motion to defer.
Second.
If you would allow, yes, I was about to share that with you, Mr. Chair. If you will allow, if there's someone in opposition to speak?
Oh, okay.
Given that opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Is there anyone else here that would care to speak in, in favor first of this? All right, no one, anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition before we move forward? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Bill Weiner. I'm an architect, urban designer. I live in number two Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. And this is concerning the Dunkin' Donut next to the Christian church on King's Highway at line. I've prepared a written statement and I think you all, each should have a copy. It looks like this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to read it out, but I'll try to summarize the points. Zoning is to keep things together that belong together by size or by functional use. This does not do either one. This, that block of, excuse me, King's Highway has a large church actually at each end and supplemental stuff going on between and there is a house or two. The church needs a new roof and they don't have the money. They want to sell their land to get the money to fix their roofs. Everybody could support that. But what they're selling it to is something that is spot zoning. To put an inappropriate use in size on that block, it'll change the look and feel of the street. That property could be sold to other groups. The med school might need it for residential use. They could build a large apartment building or condominiums there and it would be in scale with the churches and the uses. The facility will be used by students from St. Mark's School and from Birdhouse School come over and get a cup of chocolate or coffee and a donut and walk back and drop their napkins and stirring stick and stuff along the way. Who's responsible to clean that up? It's littering our city. What if a facility similar to that, we'll call it Donuts ROs, wanted to put a facility on the Courthouse Square? It would do a good business, but it's inappropriate as to size and function. But the way your rules are used, you contact the adjoining property owners, but the Courthouse Square belongs to everybody. The same is along King's Highway. That has a character, look and feel. It belongs to everybody in the community, not just the adjoining people. I, I want to just ask you to keep the president's zoning, work with the med school, see if they could use the site for housing or multi-story housing or anything else, or if a developer might want to put an office building there or housing as a condominium or straight ownership. And it would be in scale and it would not be an incompatible use. This is a community asset and it is not a, somebody say something? It's not just for the neighbors there on the street. Excuse me. I went out to look at the Dunkin' Donuts south east of town and it's a great facility. It's on a sea of concrete. Then I went back to the proposed site to see where the building would be and how it would fit. I'm an architect and studied urban design as well and I, I didn't know because there were no story poles or tape or anything to know where the building was going to be. So I couldn't say, hey, this is okay or this is not okay or you can change this to make it better. So I'm asking that you turn it down for now and have them put up story poles at the corner of the buildings to the height of the roof so you can see exactly what's going to be there and how it will be. Excuse me. Well, that's basically my points and I would really like to take questions to see if I've said anything that you disagree with.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Robertson?
Huh?
I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm right here, Mr. Weiner.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for the staff to describe the concessions that have been agreed upon by the developer? That might be of interest to Mr. Weiner.
Well, currently the applicant has requested to defer and continue.
What I based it on was the first presentation that they made it, made it a public gathering in the church.
I understand.
And it was just a rectangular building, one story, and that's all I've seen. A lot of us made comments that things should be addressed, but I don't know what happened.
Well, the developer has advised us that he wants to defer our decision on this matter until our next meeting, but there have been discussions with the staff about various concessions that he has made that may be of interest to you. So I'm afraid you're going to have to come back to the next month's meeting to hear what they are, but perhaps there's a way we can make those available to Mr. Weiner today by, by paper?
I think it would be just in order, Mr. Chair, that if the applicant was here to respond to any of the concerns that Mr. Weiner has, that's why the applicant sent a representative asking you to defer and continue until the next meeting. And I think you're right on target, Mr. Robertson, that if Mr. Weiner wants those questions answered, it would be to his advantage to return next month in February to hear the full presentation. He attended the neighborhood participation plan meeting, which the applicant shared some information, but to get the full disclosure and be able to respond and answer all of his questions, it would be appropriate for that to be done at next month's meeting if you are so inclined to defer and continue.
So, Mr. Weiner, can you come back next month?
I will. I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Weiner.
But talking about concessions, that doesn't mean anything to me. I haven't seen them, but it's inappropriate in a special block like that with two churches and large buildings to have an inappropriate use or an inappropriate size. Like if the developer came back with a three-story building with residential and a Dunkin' Donut in there, might, you know, that would be better. But it destroys the look and feel of a part of this community to drop a little building with drive-in windows, people pulling in and out and it's, there's a lot of vacant land, a couple of blocks down at Highland and King's Highway, and they're looking to develop that, it looks like, so maybe that's where they should go. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And could you send me all the compromises or suggestions?
We'll get you, we'll get you all the information you need, Mr. Weiner.
Thank you.
I believe I saw another person's hand. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, I'm in the queue.
Good afternoon.
I had a question. I guess it didn't show up.
You had a question for?
Well, I guess it's for staff. Well, I guess it's for staff. I just wanted a clarification on something.
Let's hear this gentleman. Sir, please state your name and address.
Donna Sweeters. I live at 861 Columbia, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. I live two blocks from the proposal. I live at the corner of Columbia and Thornhill. This new proposal will be from Thornhill to the parking lot of King's Highway Christian Church. I see from the drawing here, this one, if you will put that on the screen, that both entry and exit are on Thornhill, a residential street. If the feasibility study is to put this old cracker box-looking building where two houses used to be, then I would appreciate it if the entry and exit were on King's Highway because that's where they intend to get their draw. But putting it on a residential street, Thornhill Avenue, I object. So I don't know if that's any of their concessions they determined. I do know that when the judge was there at the neighborhood meeting that I attended along with Mr. Weiner, that there was mentioning that they would do various eclectic changes to the building in certain brick and certain gables and such as that. But I was never satisfied that they weren't going to use Thornhill for entrance and exit. And I object to that. I live on that street. I do not appreciate having entry and exit onto a residential street. Would you?
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd say again, this is a rezoning case. We are not considering site plans at this particular...
But you're about to...
But your objection is so noted.
Okay.
And will be made to the applicant. If you're interested in coming back next month to hear the response from that applicant, we would be happy to have you back.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Andrews and commissioners and planners and MTC staff.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else present who care to speak in opposition or make any comments? Well, you've had your turn. We will need to move on if you don't mind. If you have a question, you might address it to...
This was not the drawing that was given to me that came from the planning commission. It's totally different.
You want to talk with the staff when you get a chance?
We will give, Mr. Weiner, we will reach out to you, Mr. Weiner. We will reach out to you and make sure that you have everything that you're requesting.
Well, I was speaking to another plan and nobody told me that this has been changed. I would have said different things.
That was not to be placed up there, just incorrectly got placed up there. But you will have an opportunity to respond to the appropriate site plan at the time that the site plan is being reviewed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
That was, this kind of segues into my question. These concessions that are being discussed here, were they in place or made available at the time at the NPP? Or did they come after the meeting with the neighborhood?
They came after the meeting of the neighborhood and it was after a suggestion by staff
Okay.
that they don't apply for the zoning that they're applying for now. But they actually applied for a SPUD, I think it is.
So my comment on that would be that's probably some of the confusion in what we're seeing here.
No questions.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion, please.
I'm going to make a motion to defer.
All right. Motion by Ms. Newbert.
Second.
Just second.
If the applicant had, would like to rebuttal since you allowed opposition to speak.
Mr. Owens, is there anything you'd care to say at this time? Or, all right, then we'll, all right, we'll move forward then. There was a motion by Ms. Newbert and a second by whom?
Me.
Mr. Baldieri? All right. All those in favor, please, please vote yes. Oppositions, no.
Did y'all vote to?
Yeah, it is.
Is the system working?
Yes.
It's just the operator that don't...
Is it working now?
No, my screen doesn't.
Not where you are.
All right, we'll call for show of hands. All those in favor of defer and continue, please raise your right hand. Oppositions, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're at item number 10. Case number 22-1-CTAC, UDC Code Text Amendment. Mr. Adam Bailey.
Thank you, members of the board. There are two Code Text Amendments in front of you today. Both have to do with fences. The first has to do with fence restrictions in the corner and side yards currently. As it's written in the code, that you can only have a open fence or a closed fence up to three feet or an open fence up to six feet. This first amendment says that on a corner side yard, you can have a fence up to six feet. The second amendment has to do with barbed wire. Currently, there are restrictions, certain zoning districts where barbed wire or razor wire is allowed. I think that's in the C4, IMU, I1 and I2. This amendment would allow by right barbed wire or razor wire in the C3 district.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey, you need to know, we appreciate the step-by-step process that you're walking us through these. I know you probably prefer having another part of the assignment, but thank you for what you're doing.
My pleasure.
Helping us to understand these. Any questions for Mr. Bailey? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the motion, Mr. Bailey.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by?
Second it.
Mr. Albertson, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm afraid the folks taking the glasses off to see, but here I am now. All right, we're at item number 11, case number 21-8-SP, final plat. Do we have any comments from the staff relative to this at this point?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board. We received advice from the parish attorney that these cases should not be heard today by this board. They ask that you defer these cases to next month. By next month, a decision will have been made and a determination will be, have been made how to address these cases and cases in the future. So we ask that you just defer and continue both cases.
All right, can we do them one at a time or just...
Do one at a time.
One at a time, as they're appropriate. All right, case number 21-8-SP, final plat. Is there anyone present who care to make any comments before we move forward with the defer and continue? I believe more and associates is the applicant. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to defer.
Motion by Ms. Newbert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Case, item number 12, case number 21-39-P, zoning request. Nicole McGowan, anyone here representing Ms. McGowan? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to defer and continue.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion by whom?
Newbert.
Ms. Newbert, second by Mr. Joseph. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, board members. At this particular time, we're at the end of our agenda. What a way to start the new year, I tell you. What we would be interested in doing at this particular time is opening the floor to staff or any comments that they care to make at this time.
You had to director's report.
Is there any old business to come before the board? All right, hearing none, any new business to come before the board? Then we're down at the director's report.
And, Mr. Chair and the board, I have very limited comments to make. I hope you can hear me. I'm trying to get closer to the microphone. I guess I'm going to have to...
That's much better.
Take that New Year's resolution to exercise more and relieve myself of this mitt drip that I have that prevents me from getting to, right at the microphone. But we are real excited, as we always are, about starting the new year. We're very thankful that the events that have occurred did not deter you from coming to this meeting. We think that the attorneys are still talking. We're trying to allow three sets of attorneys to agree. That would be the city attorney's office, the parish attorney's office and the MPC attorneys, MPC attorney, Mr. Rick John. We think we're making significant progress. I think that the events that are occurring are not the best events that could possibly occur. I share with Mr. Robertson the comments that he made on yesterday that there is not a real engagement for planning in Shreveport Cattle Parish. Shreveport Cattle has never actually been a planning city. And there were some movements with the 2030 Great Expectation Master Plan to bring planning again to the Shreveport area. Many things that could have gone better did not go better. Oddly enough, I read a Facebook post that really caught my attention that said, "Don't be afraid to look at your faults." The, I think faults were made by the Cattle Parish Commission. I think faults were made by the city council. I think faults were made by the MPC board and staff. And those faults were not tried to be corrected, rectified, or come up with collaborative ideas in order to correct and move forward. The desire was to kill, steal and destroy, unfortunately. And that's where we are today. And that is an outlet that people have. I really think that, as I shared with you on yesterday, I really think that planning is the most wonderful thing that a civilized society can have in order to achieve development and growth. And as Mr. Weiner said, and he's over 80 years old and he's been at this for a while, and I know the architects have respect for he and the other Wieners, that zoning allows things that are liked to be together and prevents things that don't belong in a particular category to be placed in that particular area. Most of the time, for us, unfortunately, we play politics with zoning. We determine that if we like this particular person, regardless of what they are applying for, we should approve it. And if we don't like them, we should deny it. And if we had had a little more time, we strongly believe that all of the disgruntlement with the majority of the commission, I think it should be noted and I think it needs to be on the record because you're getting a lot of the blame also with the staff for what has happened. But every law that was enacted, every amendment that was enacted, was enacted by the Cattle Parish Commission. You'd never had the authority to enact any laws. You never had the authority to resolve any property. You were always a recommending body that recommended to the city council and the parish commission any changes in land and property. But with that said, we are going to continue forward regardless of what happens. We've taken all the criticism, we've taken all the negativity. We started the year off with a positive attitude. We're going to be in place. We are hopeful that the parish commission determines that we are the best agency to provide the transition for the properties in the parish of Cattle, the unincorporated area. If they make another decision, we are equally fine with that. But I wanted to share with you that it has been an honor serving with you as we have gone through this process. It's been a wonderful process. And I know that great things are ahead for us. If we are restricted to the city of Shreveport, we can make significant improvements to the city of Shreveport. You already know some of the things we're looking at. It would be so wonderful, though, if that was connected to the parish of Cattle. I think that the, people talk about House Bill 697 and Act 294. These were results of disgruntled residents in certain areas of the parish. And we never were resistant to making corrections. As you've noticed, Adam Bailey, today, I think we've made over 300 amendments to the Unified Development Code for the city of Shreveport. So documents are voted upon, created, but there is always the chance to find what's wrong with them and change and make those things right. I think that the parish Unified Development Code could have been totally reamended, totally re-amended and rewrote to fit the needs of the parish, to make it more user-friendly for rural areas. Those things were proposed, those things were rejected. I think the master plan is a wonderful document. I think that most people don't take the time out to read the master plan. And I think that we had even talked about, because of the feelings of residents in the parish, that we needed to get with a consulting agency and do a chapter devoted strictly to development and growth within the rural areas. I just wanted you to know as your staff that all of these things were put out there, all of these things were attempted to happen, and they all were rejected. But the master plan will be the guiding document for the city of Shreveport, if not the parish of Cattle. It's a wonderful document. I am so thankful that some of you read the master plan, have been exposed to the master plan, visit other cities, know how wonderful planned cities really are. When you come back to your city and say, "Why our city is not like this?" I've just given you part of the reason why our city cannot be like this. Until we adopt the actions and the postures of the cities that we like so much to visit, our city will always be inferior to those cities. And that's truly unfortunate. But I wanted to share that with you as we go because I don't know exactly what this will look like on the horse you come February meeting. But I wanted each and every one of you to understand on behalf of the staff how much we appreciate your input, your questions, your suggestions, your directions and the knowledge that you brought to this board. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corey. Before we open up a question, I have one other thing and I made a note here. Mr. Renji, would you care to make any kind of report? I have it in front of me.
Oh, yes, I will make this report. Just so y'all know that how businesses have done in Shreveport over the last year as well as how zoning enforcement has been active in the community. So we're going to start off with the issue, seat certificates of occupancy in the city of Shreveport. Your home-based businesses, we had 498 issued. Your commercial businesses, we had 633 issued. And your temporary certificates, we had 33 issued. In comparison to 2020, the home base was 492, so we had six more. The commercial was 519, so we had 104 more, I mean 14 more. And your temporary was a... And your temporary was 41, which we had eight less this year, eight temporary, eight less temporary. Your parish, your home base, we had 14 this year compared to 15 in 2020. We had, commercial, we had three this year compared to six in 2020, and we had zero temp in either year. As far as the violations go, in the city, we issued 1,162 violations in '21 compared to 879 in 2020. And in the parish, we issued 76 in '21 compared to 28 in 2020. So if you look at it, even though we're still in a pandemic, businesses in Shreveport have continued to grow, and zoning enforcement has continued to be active and very present in the community.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. We have a question for you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Do you have that summary list you could share with us?
Like a printout?
Yeah.
I do.
I got them all individual here, but I like the numbers, just the way you had them there, so I don't have to go back and count them.
Yeah, I can either give it to you, but we had, it was like 100 sheets of paper that I would have had to print out to give everybody their copy. So I can either give you a copy of my numbers, or if you want to see it, I can-
No, no, just that little summary that you'd read off right there.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
All right. I believe that we are, we're gonna provide an opportunity for questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Will Robinson?
I'd like a copy of that summary, too, Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Jordan, why don't you-
Well, I'll just email all of y'all.
All right, that'll work.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
You know, I made a kind of a joking suggestion yesterday that the MPC might need a public relations department. Do you do public relations at all?
Not in the sense-
You have social media sites or-
We have Facebook. We're doing all type of things to reach out to the public. We were just in discussion on yesterday, maybe it was Monday, talking about, we're looking at, I think it's Notify Me, some of these other entities. We have totally revamped the web page. We're doing all type of things. And like I said, the Neighborhood Participation Plan, meetings were not meetings to gripe and have, show opposition. It was an opportunity for persons to be introduced to planning and understand what was being proposed for neighborhoods and how it would impact neighborhoods. So we continue to, and I did not take your statement as, in a joking fashion, we continue to try to reach the general public. We have about six to eight neighborhood plans in the work right now that we are working with neighborhoods to develop master plans for those neighborhoods and get them set up for 501(c)(3) status with the Internal Revenue Service so we can assist them in applying for grants. We do a lot of things that we think that is positive public relations that never get exposed.
Do you have staff that can go give speeches at neighborhood meetings?
We have staff that can go.
Do you issue press releases?
We do issue press releases. We haven't issued one in a while, but we issue press releases when we feel that is important to get information out to the city and the parish.
I sent a note at December to Mr. Jean about the notification I received from Representative McCormick about his meeting on the 28th of December at Vivian to rally his troops against the MPC. Did anybody from the commission staff attend that meeting?
We made a concentrated effort that we would not fight with Representative McCormick or the citizens of the Cattle Alliance for Freedom. We attended meetings when the problem first began. We gave them all the information that we had. Our concern was always, and still is, that decisions made in the parish of Cattle in the unincorporated areas should be made by the Cattle Parish Commission and not the Louisiana Legislature. That's why we did not attend this meeting. He's done what he set out to do. These acts, House Bill 697 has been approved, enacted, and Act 294, so there's nothing else for us to have the conversations about.
Was there any outreach to Mr. McCormick during this process from the MPC?
You mean, once this all started? Yes, we had, we met with Representative McCormick. We met with his chief of staff. We had four neighborhood meetings in four different areas of the parish. We continued to reach out to them, continued to make proposals to them, continued to ask for input from them, continued to ask them to collaborate with us, with the residents of the parish, to determine exactly what needed to be done. We even went as far as almost, we completed a replacement ordinance for the Cattle Parish Unified Development Code, but none of those things were received.
What was the issue that lit the match?
I think the issue that lit the match, it's a sort of a long story, but I'll try to condense it.
Excuse my ignorance, I should know, but I don't-
No, no, you shouldn't. But historically, the MPC receives a subsidy from the city of Shreveport and a subsidy from the parish of Cattle. That's how things were set up back in the 50s. And we maintain fees that we collect for things like these hearings, the applications and signed permits, certificates of occupants, et cetera. Each year, instead of the parish of Cattle and the city of Shreveport meeting and having discussions about the funding for the MPC, because the funding was not equitable. It was more like the city was doing 70%, and I may not be accurate, and the parish was doing like 17%. And the city would always complain that the parish needs to come closer to 50% of the funding. And that's, when you're having to meet with the city to get budgets approved, you try to find ways in order to get the additional funds that the city is demanding that be appropriated for planning and zoning. One of the things that the parish of Cattle said was, "You only do 17% of work in the parish, so that's all we're gonna find you for." So we started trying to find additional responsibilities and additional services that we could provide in the parish. One of the things we did was, nobody really knew about the Cattle Parish Unified Development Code. So we addressed some of the concerns that the ordinance stated and made citizens aware that in accordance with the Cattle Unified Development Code, these things are violations. Once citizens receive notification, although they miscalculated them as tickets, we could never write tickets. And we could never issue any fines or receive any fines, but once we made these notifications, that started the process of eliminating the authority of the Metropolitan Planning Commission in the parish. And it just grew from there. And that's the condensed version.
Interesting story.
It's been a fun experience. I continue to say to you, and I said this to the citizens, it is unfortunate and is not to the best of our city and our parish that we cannot work together and develop ordinances and codes and plans that ties both in together, because Shreveport will forever be in Cattle Parish. There's nothing that nobody can do to take Shreveport out of Cattle Parish, so forever we will be connected. But we decided that maybe we don't want to do that.
So the ordinance that you referenced yesterday, I believe that calls for repeal of the UDC, is pending or perhaps already acted on by the parish commission?
They have not acted upon the UDC at this point. There are some issues coming before the Lung Rage Planning Committee. I think they're meeting Friday. The full body of the Cattle Parish Commission meeting on Thursday. Basically, they had gone, they had started the process at one point of establishing a Cattle Parish Planning and Zoning Board. And they went through a process of organizing, appointing a citizens advisory committee. And one of the things that the citizens advisory committee determined was, they did not want any volunteer board to make any recommendations for zoning and planning activities in the parish. So one of the things that was on the agenda was to repeal that ordinance that created that board, so they will not have a planning zoning board. Another thing was to repeal the Great Expectation 2030 Master Plan. So, but, you know, these are things that the Cattle Parish Commission always had the authority to do. The Louisiana Legislature could not give them the authority to do that. They had the authority to do that, and they chose not to do that. And the city of Shreveport chose not to take any actions to pull itself away from the agreement with the Cattle Parish Commission.
The action by the parish commission, either present or future, doesn't repeal the development code for the city, correct?
It has no effect on the city.
Okay.
And I was listening to the commissioners yesterday, and they were discussing that in order to repeal the Cattle Parish Unified Development Code, that would need to be a board to recommend the repeal of that ordinance. And they've already determined that they didn't want a board in the parish. So they're working to determine how to get that code repealed in the parish.
I quote my grandmother, "Dog catches call, dog catches call." Never.
I need to speak to you afterward.
No problem.
Just a moment. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, any more questions?
I have one.
Ms. Newby?
I don't want to prolong anything. Mr. Clark, you spoke about neighborhood programs that are being worked on to move into a nonprofit status. Is that similar to what Ms. Fuller has going on in the Highland area? I've been watching the Shreveport Volunteer Network take down some blighted properties, and I know there was, you know, a judicial process that had to go through to get permission to do that. Can you speak a little bit on that? It's very interesting to me.
I don't know what Councilwoman Fuller is doing in Highland. We, you know, what happens is that we like to recreate the wheel. I think that's the way that expression works. But we, the city of Shreveport long has had a Blight Efficiency Committee, something similar to that, that incorporated all of the departments in the city of Shreveport to address blight. That system no longer works. But in community planning, and Emily is not here, but in community planning, Emily has been doing extensive research in determining how to set up the Blight Efficient System in order to address blight in the city. I think that, you know, that's what I was alluding to, and not being ugly in no way whatsoever, if we start talking to each other, and if we start working together, we might solve a whole lot of the problems that we have, but we operate in silos and we get turf-orientated, and that diminishes our ability to possibly solve some of the problems that we have. The master plan talked about all of these things, you know, that's that nasty word that comes up, but the master plan alluded to all of these things and came up with recommendations on how to address these things. And the master plan was not the MPC master plan. The master plan was the plan for the city of Shreveport and those areas and environs outside the city limits of Shreveport, in that five-mile radius. It was never the MPC master plan. And it talks about all kind of different and wonderful things that can be done. And community planning, again, we were just getting ready to start back. We had had some success with the Cattle Parish administration in addressing some of the recommendations that the master plan made for Cattle Parish. They were getting ready to reach out to those departments again in the parish, but I think we'll hold up on doing that, because the parish is talking about totally disarming and repealing the master plan.
The reason why I bring that up, and I watched some of the videos at the time, they were live videos, where they were bringing some of the houses down. They did 10 houses in a week, which I thought was very impressive, with a volunteer nonprofit organization, Shreveport Volunteer Network. I don't know if y'all are familiar with it, but, so my question then, based on what you just said, that the staff is working on it, would there be any value in Ms. Emily and being your staff member, maybe working with Ms. Fuller, to see if there's some synergies that can be reached there, or some education that, you know, some information that y'all might be able to gain from Ms. Fuller's success with this?
Like I'm sharing with you, Mrs. Newby, in reference to the parish commission, all the city council has to do is ask us, as you know, they submitted a resolution asking for the liquor moratorium. They requested that we deal with the residential rental registration program. They remanded it back to you, and we're gonna make some adjustments to it. The Cattle Parish Commission and the city council are the legislative branches of government, and we have always responded to them. All they have to do is ask.
Okay.
And she's so inclined to feel that she needs our assistance. One of my problems, and it's a personal problem, and it's not a MPC representative's statement, but one of my problems is we tear down houses and we leave open spaces in neighborhoods, because we don't tear down houses in affluent neighborhoods. We tear down houses in inner-city core neighborhoods, and we have no plans to replace those houses. It's wonderful. You tear them down, then when you tear them down, somebody has to maintain the grass. It doesn't get maintained, you successfully tore the house down, but you had no plan on how to replace it.
That was one of the comments that she made on the live feed, was that there was a neighbor next door to this particular house, and that they could go through the adjudicated process and get the property for a dollar, it would be bought back on tax rolls. I mean, I see, I deal with adjudicated property personally on acquisitions. It's not an easy process whatsoever, and it's a risk, especially if you want to use it to build, because a lot of banks will not finance it. I'm getting off on another area, but I just would say, to close this, is that blight is not just a Levett Fuller, Commissioner Fuller's area's problem, it is a Shreveport problem. And if she's had some success with this, perhaps we could learn something from her model, so to speak. That's just my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, any more questions? Any comments? Well, it's certainly been a pleasure this afternoon to be able to call this meeting and join in it, only 10 minutes after court.
Wow.
Meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. We don't need a motion. I know, that's why I said that. We don't need a motion.
Good to see you, Curtis.
We say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Very well.
Got to come see you.
Good luck.
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 Good luck.